You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I will call the order, to order the June 22nd, 2023 order of the planning board. I'll stop cell.
Here.
Ricky Lane, me, myself, Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yeah.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Bill Hotline.
Here.
Alton C Malone.
Here.
And our other two are not here. Michael Sciringo and Brian Vertigal. The agenda for this evening, applications in public hearings. Question is 23-015, multi-tenant application. Northeast Glass LLC requests to operate a glass repair in Glazier shop in an existing commercial multi-tenant property owned by Homestead Swansea LLC, located at 2 South Winchester Street, Tax Map 72, Lot 31, in the Village Business 2 District. Item B, number 23-016, site plan review application. Tri-State Restoration requests a site plan review to construct a 3,500 square foot office and garage structure and associated site improvements at 26 Monanuck Highway. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 18, Lot 264, in the Business District. Upon finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the Site Plan Review Regulations, the board, excuse me, the board will vote to accept the application as complete, and a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for time and date certain. Item C, number 23-017, Site Plan Review Application. Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Edgewater Construction Incorporated, requests a site plan review to construct a 25,500 square foot self-storage facility with associated site improvements at Tax Map 55, Lot 1, in the Commercial Industrial District. Upon a finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the Site Plan Review Regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete, and a public hearing may follow immediately or be scheduled for time certain. Item D, proposed amendments to the Site Plan Review Regulations. This is a public hearing required. Purpose of amendments impact organization of the document and regulations throughout. Item number seven, this discussion of other business, Plan Region Workshop, or other business as required. Well, entertain a motion as to whether or not we require a regional impact study or notification.
I'll make a motion that nothing on tonight's agenda requires us to notify the surrounding towns.
Scott Self.
Second, Victoria.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
So, just ask for any from the discussion before we go to the, before we do the tally up. It's the same, before we do the tally up, this is fine with us all, but when we do the motions, I ask for the discussion because sometimes there's a discussion between the second and the actual vote.
Okay, next item is the review and approve of the minutes from the last meeting. Any changes that have been noted? Or discussion that needs to be daily? I'll entertain a motion acceptance of the previous meetings and minutes.
Zoom.
Jane Johnson.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item would be the application, multi-tenant, excuse me, 23-015, multi-tenant application by Northeast Glass to operate a glass repairing Glazier shop in existing commercial tenant property owned by Homestead Swansea LLC at 2 South Winchester Street, Tax Map 72, Lot 31, in the Village Business 2 District.
Mr. Vice Chair, I believe that the applicant intended to join via Zoom. I don't know. Is anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, Northeast Glass LLC, you have any ten speaker on?
Yeah, thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Please announce when you open the public hearing so I can document the time that you open it.
Okay. The first item would be to review the application. And determine whether or not it's a complete application.
I'll make a motion that the application is complete and ready to go to public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any more perhaps to open the public meeting? And Northeast Glass, do you have anything to say?
Is he on speaker? That's the one on speaker.
I think we're all set.
Anyone in the public wish to speak concerning this application?
I'd just like to hear from the applicant. What exactly is it that you do?
We repair all glass on vehicles, all glass on houses, commercial storefronts, showers, windows, anything that includes glass screens, metal doors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is in an existing structure with, are there any altercations that would be done by you?
No, there would not be.
Parking lots and lots.
Yep, using parking out front by the way. And that garage is a garage as it's been with that office building. It's just open inside. I've been in there before. It's open inside. Good space for you to work.
The shop, your shop is going to be next to an existing parking lot, which is almost across from Cutler School. Is that correct?
Um, yes, kind of. It's one of the field houses.
Right there, where their parking is. Cutler School is right over there.
Do you do any fabrication on the premises?
That would be his part of it, right here. It would be right in that area of where that garage is. Parking is out front there.
Do you do any fabrication on the premises?
There will be no fabrication. We're only going to screen this one.
So if I want a glass enclosure put on my house, do you not do that work?
Yes.
Yes, you do and no, you don't.
Uh, glass enclosures, yes.
Where do you fabricate the framing for the enclosure?
Um, we order it out.
Is there any chemical storage involved?
The only chemical we use is de-natured alcohol and spray-based glass cleaner.
Any other comments from the board or questions? That being based on a close to the public hearing? Board members having, I think, just for a little say concerning?
Again, pretty straightforward, an existing building and good to get something in there. I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it. Welcome to approved by Scott, excuse me, by Brandon Self, approved, uh, accepted by Michael York. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
Just ask for the question. Just in case, time to throw the discussion.
Next item up is number 23-016, Site Plan Review Application. The Tri-State Restoration requests a site plan review to construct a 3,500 square foot office and garage structure associated site improvements at 26, thank you, 26 Monanuck Highway. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 18, Lot 264, in the Business District. Upon a finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the Site Plan Review Regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete, and a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for time and date certain.
What they're up to make the presentation and they're gonna roll to the application, whether it's going on. Just have to go over the checklist.
Are you ready to identify yourself, please?
My name is Joshua Dawson. I'm with Braden Canary representing us.
Joshua Rebecca Norway.
I'm sorry, the last name Joshua?
J O S L Y N.
Thank you.
Sam and Rebecca Norway are also here. They're with Tri-State Restoration, near the owners. So, quick overview here, there's an existing house on the site. It is 20th Monanuck Highway, map 18, Lot 264. They're proposing to keep that existing house and add a garage building out back. It's gonna be garage and office space. That's where they're gonna run their Tri-State Restoration business out of. So to do this, we are putting it back in the grass area. We're gonna be extending the existing driveway and widening it so to mitigate all of that storm water runoff. We're proposing these roof drains that are gonna run along the length of the driveway and then out to an infiltration basin out back where it's gonna capture all of the water from the drip line and from the driveway. And that's designed to pass the 50-year storm. So, as far as the lighting goes, there exist three exterior lights on the building right now. One on the front, one on the back, and one on the garage. We're proposing to add three new lights on the proposed building, and those are supposed to be downcast lights. Uh, there is six full-time employees, so we have six parking spaces proposed for the employees as well as two extra parking spaces proposed for the residents, all contained within that single driveway. It seemed like the New Hampshire DOT didn't wanna see two access driveways there. So we've made it offset within the setbacks there on the existing driveway. Uh, we're proposing also a holding tank that's gonna be coming out of the right-hand side of the house, shown here. And that's a thousand gallon recast concrete septic tank that's basically gonna capture all the snow runoff. Uh, that's gonna be inside the building when the snow melts, when the vehicles are parked in there. The proposed water line is going to tie into the existing water line that's running to the current house with its own curb stop. And, um, it's gonna have a check valve inside because required by the water precinct. And the existing septic area right now is supposed to remain, and we did have, they had a design done by a septic pro. So if that septic does fail, then there is a design that's gonna be approved there as well. The existing building right now, it's going within an open kind of field area, and the whole site is surrounded by woods on the north and the east, southeast. And there's a six-foot stockade fence along the property lines to the north, the northwest there. So we're not proposing any additional landscaping. It's the whole site has screened in and surrounded properties with our existing office spaces to the left and right, and there's some dwelling out back there, free of our move from the site.
Having driven by there, uh, yesterday and looking back to the back of their property, that's really thin back there, and you can see beyond, excuse me, into, uh, whatever. That can't fall if it's housing that's back there or not. But, uh, I would think that it might be prudent to put or extend a stockade fence across your eastern boundary.
That, what you mean along the back tree line back?
Yes. As I say, it's thin and whatever is in back there. I don't think they wanna be looking into the backside of their shed or kind of view there.
Yeah, that's.
We can if need be. I just.
I'm sorry.
We absolutely can if need be. I'm just surprised. There's only one little spot that you can even see beyond the trees. But absolutely, if that's what you want, that's what we'll do.
Let's get the application.
Yeah, okay. Looking down the checklist, I noticed we're looking for two waivers?
Yeah, one with the landscaping plan because we believe there was sufficient screening around the whole site. And then the other one with the waiver for the lot because there is no lot on site at the time.
This is how.
Consensus of the board or motion. I'll make a motion that we grant the two variant, I mean, two waivers, item number 13 and number 22 as requested.
I'll second that. Any, um, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that. Um, do we consider a stockade fence to be part of landscaping? We do.
I don't think so. I would, we require fences in different areas there, but I don't know that it's actually part of the landscaping.
I just don't wanna lose our ability to consider that.
Oh, yeah.
We could, we could still consider that.
Even if, you know, even if we give them a waiver for the landscape plan, we can still require certain things in there regardless.
Um, and the other thing, I was over there today too. So.
Does this pertain to the motion?
Well, it pertains to landscaping, yeah, yeah. So, um, some of the trees that are in this, in the back corner, I'll call it.
Yep.
Will have to be cut, right, to create this?
Yeah, that, that back corner, there's really no large trees in that back corner. It's more brush shown, and it's, I think it used to be much more open when that was being used more in the shed, and that's kind of been overgrown now.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, some of that brush will have to be cleared, yes.
The shed is here.
There is one way out in the back.
One in the back, okay. Okay, yeah, we have to, um, go further to say one more thing?
Yeah, um, I'm just, it's not clear to me of, of the, the trees and whatnot that are there already, um, what's going to be made, what's gonna be removed?
So this, this, or I'll. Uh, so this tree line here is gonna remain, other than this little bump out here, um, that's, there's not really trees there. That's like a little flower patch. Um, so that's gonna just continue straight along here, and then it's gonna remain all the way along the back here and then be cleared back here for the grading of that basin. So.
Into the backside of the basin.
Yeah, exactly. But that back corner has those fences that run along the backside of the property line.
And those fences are vinyl fence, right? It's.
The, the one on the left-hand side, this one, is a vinyl fence, and then at that angle point, that's a tall stockade wood fence.
Okay, okay, okay. And it kind of looks like it's off the property. Is that true?
Yeah, I'm not sure whose fences they actually are.
Oh, well, they.
Like, I don't know if they're owned by this.
Yeah, I think they are because they continue, you know, like if you go into that.
Yeah, they do, they continue. That's all I got to, but it does continue along this back line there.
So I don't think this fence is actually that person, the applicant's fence, stockade fence that's shown on here.
I don't think so. We're, we're just deciding.
Any further, any further? Jane?
How, how, how and when would be defined as to when a new system will be provided for water supply and sewage disposal?
Or?
Because it says, "A report on the condition of existing septic is included in the attachment. A proposed new system is shown on the site plan, demonstrating the ability to accommodate a new system in the future when the need arises." So.
Jane, we haven't accepted the application as complete yet, the site plan stuff. So let's just get the application on the way as complete.
Well, okay.
And then, then hold that thought, and I don't mean to.
No, listen, please do.
Well, as soon as we get the waivers done.
Okay, so we have a motion on accepting the waivers. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna be opposed. I'm opposed.
Okay. Then the checklist is accepted as completed. Do we accept the application as being completed?
I'll make that same motion that we accept the application as complete and ready to go to public hearing. And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Open the public hearing. Jane, you have your question, Mary.
Well, I just was curious as to when and how you would determine that you need to update the water supply and disposal system. Because it says, um, it's demonstrated abilities that demonstrate to accommodate a new system in the future when the need arises. And what would, what would constitute that need?
Well, the water supply won't need to be up here. That's gonna be, gonna be happening off the existing supply and going for any building. But the sewage disposal system, you replace that and it fails. So when the soils around you get overly saturated and it's no longer accepting it, or that usually happens when you start getting backup in the house, then the water's still not leaching into the field or you start seeing breakout out in the yard, start seeing sewage in the grass, then then it needs to be replaced. That design was done to show that there is room that will put a new system that will accommodate the flow when the new building going in.
Okay, this further follow-up? What, um, does this apply to the cleaning solutions and things that you might be using?
We, we will not be putting anything into the system for cleaning. We do all of our work off of site.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that's what I wanna do.
Clean up in our site.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow that up. This is a nice segue for me. Um, the chemicals that you will have stored on the premises for use, we would like a li, I would, and we'd like a list of those chemicals. Having some experience with chemicals, some can be quite hazardous. And you sit, well, there's two thoughts here. First of all, you sit on Aquaphor.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would like to be ensured that the protection of our Aquaphor is there.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I assume.
Mike, would you mind identifying both of you yourselves, please?
Rebecca Norway.
I'm sorry.
And I'm Rebecca Norway.
Norway.
Thank you.
Rebecca Norway.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And I'm assuming your storage will be in OSHA-approved containers with labeling? These are MTS sheets?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we would, I would like to give these to the health officer so she can go through them and see if there's anything of concern for the town.
Sure, uh, we did have a, um, where we're located now on Triff Road, it's a commercial, um, condo unit. And we just recently had a fire inspection, a safety inspection, and there was nothing of concern to,
Okay.
To Keene, City of Keene, so.
Okay.
That I, I just, I know from our existing space and how we do things.
And I would suggest that maybe we make these available to the fire chief too, so that if there happened to be, unfortunately, happened to be a fire or any reason for them to get there, then the chief will know what he's fighting.
Absolutely, and it's probably about a, we have, we store our chemicals in one space, and we have a few cans of paint for just easy description, um, for stain blockers, why have you, kills. So we have those, we keep them separate from our chemicals, and our chemicals, we, we do not carry a large amount of chemicals. I mean, the most that we have, we generally carry gallons of, you know, those items on there unless it's a can of.
Now, do you use anything like acetone or anything of that class?
No.
Of acetone, well.
Acetone.
The only thing we ever use is, we use a one-gallon jugs of thinner to clean our paint gun on-site but not in our building.
Oh, and that I do not, yeah, that I don't have on there for an.
That's the only thing we use, the, uh, we use regular paint.
Yeah, because acetone is a very dangerous chemical.
Right. And that, again, never make too bad.
But some people do use it, so.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, the list of things there, I mean, there, I think there's two of them, uh, in there that, that, um, are warnings as far as like not, not putting into the ground.
Right.
Kind of thing. There might be a notice on a couple others, but I think there's only a couple of them that specifically say, you know, do not, do not put into the, into the ground, you know, dangerous to aqua life, um, aquatic life. Uh, the amount that we carry at any given time would never even reach the ground. Maybe, you know, from, if nobody was there, I mean, I can't even imagine that if, you know, we're there in individual gallons. Like I said, we just carry a small amount and.
And I assume you do have an action plan if you do have an accident spell even for a small amount?
Absolutely, yep.
Would you give an overview of what you do?
Yeah, so, um, primarily is water damage cleanup and mold remediation. Uh, so a lot of our equipment is, um, air movers, dehumidifiers, air scrubbers. Uh, that's the majority of the storage that we have. We of course have some chemicals because we use them to, you know, kill the mold spores. We do general cleaning at times, sewer backups, you know, that kind of pay. So sometimes we do fires. They're not that often, but we do fire cleanup as well. So, you know, we have to combat odor from sewer and fire. Uh, we have to encapsulate oftentimes with, you know, fires and mold, so that's, that's something that, um, we got the kills on site for, and the kill odor is one of the products for odor. Yeah, that's pretty much what we do.
And it's all off-site? That's what you said?
Yeah, yeah, we go to the location to take care of what we need to, so. Yep.
The site, basically, we store our equipment. We have, it cannot freeze, is like 60 or 70 dehumidifiers. And our van has a pump system on it, so that is also gonna be inside.
Right, so we store our vehicles inside as much as possible.
That's the garage there, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so we don't have to take all of our chemicals, you know, out every day, not vehicles.
And you're not into repairing your vehicles on-site? You take them to a mechanic or something?
No, we have a, we, we, um, are proposing to have our lift, we have a lift, um, we do general stuff. Anything bigger, we of course bring.
Yeah, and it'll only be your company vehicles.
Yes, yeah, just our company vehicles. Yes, yeah, just our company vehicles.
We're just looking at your exist, we're gonna change direction here on, looking at your existing septic system. Where is your leak field?
It's a leak pit. It's like a, like a drywall with crushed dog around it.
Yeah, it's, so that's, that circular area on the drawing, is that correct? That's what that is? Yeah. And how are you gonna tie in the building to that?
Uh, the building's gonna tie into that existing septic.
So, the new building is gonna tie into the existing septic tank through, I guess it looks like, do you just note it on, I mean, just show it on the.
Um, just, I didn't, it's not shown on the plan, but it's just gonna tie into the tank, but.
So they'd have to come way around the backside, right? And into the front septic tank?
Yeah.
In order to accommodate that, because it goes the wrong direction by the way.
Yep.
Well, they're gonna be using that septic to answer, their whole plan is to use that septic system until it fails. Go with anyone, if, if anyone, the other one fails. And it's, looks like it's, I guess it's one bathroom inside of that garage? By the looks of it, office.
No, uh, there's, there's a private, yeah, so there's a private, because of where, you know, like.
Yeah.
It's not additional use, it's just instead of going around to the other one, it's just one right there, my office or us.
Not a lot of use gonna.
No.
Seen.
Nobody's there all day except for herself, just her, the rest of us are all on-site somewhere else.
Right, in one part, we do have one part time. First with the office, so.
Reconsidering our section, but what is, this is being, is this going to be residential?
It's gonna remain, as, as far as I know, in Astor.
What is the existing home that's there, what is that going to be retained as? Is that gonna be residential?
Yeah, so the current, or the previous homeowner is currently still there. And he's going to be there for some time until something opens up for him to move to. Uh, and then what we'd like to do is continue it as a rental. Help offset some of the, you know, cost of the property and building.
Any further discussion?
How many residences are there?
I'm sorry, what?
How many residences are there?
One.
And we've included two parking spaces for that.
And the lights that you've shown on the building, they're on this front side by the looks of it, two of them?
Uh, there's two on the front side, and then there is a door up to the back.
Have one of them back to them.
And those are all supposed to be just down past light, just where the doorway is.
Are those going to be motion sensitive, sensitive, or not?
I guess they could be.
I mean, I'm asking, you know.
That'd be up to you.
Right. That would make a lot, yeah, that would make a lot of sense to have them motion sensitive, probably, um, I think that would be a great sagey option.
Any further?
Yeah, just a couple.
I know.
First of all, I think, I think this is a great use for the location, and I'm really happy to make you go over this, moving to Swansea with this, but, um, one question has to do with how your fleet operates, so every vehicle in your fleet will be stored year-round inside the building, is how it goes?
Well, I mean, once in a while we'll leave us, you know, like one of our cargo vans outside, you know, at our current location. Um, but in the wintertime, it's, it's just really nice to be able to not have to worry about first thing in the morning, you're heading off to a job and you have to clear and, you know, go through all of that, so. In the wintertime, absolutely, we will want the vehicles inside.
Yeah.
Sometimes in the, in the warmer months, if there's nothing in the vehicle to worry about, then we, we park it outside.
Where I'm going with that question is just to be sure that there's adequate parking for the people, you know, your workers who come in, leave their vehicles, then they hop in the fleet vehicles, so, you have enough space to accommodate both things. And, and the second concern, um, question I have is you've got an existing shed here, your existing dealership here. Are those to be part of the, you know, your vacation?
The, so the current.
That's the S sheets that he's looking at.
They've retained the house.
Yeah, this one does, and this one is not even used, it's just there, yeah. It apparently at one time, I think.
They're not equating them with.
Was somebody, like they, we heard from a realtor like way back in the day, maybe. There's more of those buildings, and they were like little rooms than people. Yeah, I know.
And which sort of takes me to my third thought, which is, um, wherever, whenever we have um, residential uses, abutting, commercial business uses, um, I, I'm always concerned to, you know, try to protect the, the the values that residents gather, which is why. I'm not sure about having screening along this, this portion, right?
With Lee's, with Lee's Realty is?
No, no, not down there, because, um, not the, not the real estate office, but up here. Okay, there's a house, and it's sort of like the backyard, right?
Well, this is, you see, the tree line's here, and then their tree line is kind of here, so there is.
Okay.
That's seventy feet of a tree.
Cause I know when you, when you look on little maps, it looks really dense, right? I just wanted to be assured of that.
Yeah, no, but there's, cause I was out there walking around looking for pins and stuff, and it's, there, there's a lot of trees out there.
Okay, okay.
The house? How many fleet vehicles are there?
We have three vans, we have one pickup. And usually one of those vans goes home with me every day. So it's really two that stay at the shop.
So the trailer would probably be occupying one of these.
There would be sort of side.
Trailer, yeah, okay. Enclosed.
Yeah.
Typically speaking, what time do the fleet vehicles arrive back at the location?
Our general hours are seven to three-thirty. It might be that they're back at two-thirty, it might be they're back at four.
Okay, so it's not eight o'clock at night and flights falling?
What?
It's not eight o'clock at night and flights falling?
No.
Unless there's an emergency that, you know, that we can't control that.
Right.
We like them to be first thing in the morning.
Any further questions? Okay, I think it's, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or anything from the board concerning this you want to discuss?
Yeah, it looks like they've accommodated the things that they needed to, as far as the parking goes, and they took care of that second entrance there, I guess the DOT took care of that. They only have one entrance now.
Now, would you consider the fence?
The fence, was that the one that's in place, I mean?
Yeah, you, you asked about them extending it across.
Extending the, the stockade.
They agreed to do that, so.
The condition.
To where? I must have. This little spot here?
From what I, let's see, I believe I was looking this way, so it's pretty much this area here. What I'm referring to is the, uh, jog coming off of your, um, stockade, I guess to the back, yes, that in that area there.
So, well, this fence actually does extend to.
Right, but your, your property.
Right, you're extending here?
Yes. I believe that's the area that you can, you can look right through because the, the trees are thin. The branches have been removed to a point where you can see right straight through, so. Myself, I'd like to see the, uh, the fence line here, stockade, extended over to your south property line, that way you'd block the view going into the properties behind you. I don't think it says much either.
So, you're talking about from there to there?
To here.
Okay.
So would we have somebody come out to the site as far as what you're requesting?
Can you say that, what, to verify that you found that?
I mean, to, to show, like, where that location.
Uh, I, I know the location, you're talking about now.
Okay.
That's actually from a couple weeks ago when I was doing the survey out there, I cut branches down the sightline. So that's why that's open, that.
So there'll be another years before they grow back.
Yeah, okay. So that.
Can you point out, is it that, the short section that goes from the point?
And Josh, we did have some branches cut down as well.
Look at these, oh, you guys.
We did.
Okay.
Because they, we just had them clean up any bad, any, any bad branches, any, anything that was of concern so that nothing would be an issue when the building was in place. And it was just the branches that, um, and, uh, there was one leaning tree, and then there were some branches and a broken tree, so it was a unsightly um, issue. Yeah, and then they cleaned up the ground.
The dwelling is over there, right? The dwelling is not here.
The apartment, the issue of the, the northernmost houses, Richard and Charlotte, you're seeing.
The house is basically similar to this house, so it's over here.
It's in the line, so it's like.
Yeah, it's, it's in a line with these houses here.
With young corn.
It doesn't look.
Yeah.
If there's another over there.
Is it maybe in that line?
It's like to there.
Yeah, that looks right, yeah.
Cause there's your property. Because here's the, you know, here's the colonial housing.
Right, yeah.
And then the other one is.
So it's, yeah.
We can't, so then are perfectly, but it should be from that point into that one to that.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
This one, yeah.
Okay. So.
All right, the next one over, will the board have some memory of this?
Richard?
Yes?
This money, this is the aerial view, if you wanna kind of see, I don't know.
Throw it, just pass it down.
Lady, don't.
The square blocky routes to the colonial village.
Yeah, the same one right there, so this is what you're talking about, to that, to that, there's really nothing back there, really. Way back there, maybe.
I guess must have been to see. I'll leave it up to the board. Make, make a motion to, to put that in there, as a condition or not?
So, what we're talking about is, see the property line, see that jog in the property line right there? Talking about making a fence from that point there down and to the left, that little jog.
Yeah, what, what's behind that, Scott?
It's trees, there's a house there, and there are trees here, and there's a house over in there, which I think it's shown on the drawing, maybe this that one. Yeah, it's up there.
Does it show the distance?
No, no, we can measure.
From this, is that gonna, is that house gonna have light of sight, it's gonna be able to see stuff? Be of an issue to them?
I don't know, it looks like trees and stuff between them and there, but I guess just.
Looks like there are trees in between there and the house.
Mm-hmm. To decide, see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So. But Richard is asking.
But it doesn't look like it's a major expense either, we're not talking about thousands of dollars to extend that, so.
I think, personally, I think there are enough trees there so that, you don't really have to put a fence in there.
I do too.
Would be driven by?
Oh, many times. And exactly.
Just pull the board.
You know.
Little musical there, Mark.
The jury? Yes or no?
I, I was feeling that I wanted it until, um, I looked more carefully, and at this point, I'm satisfied that there's already adequate
Okay.
screening from trees.
Michael?
Yeah.
Bren?
No.
Jane?
No.
Let me, no, that we, that we don't need.
I would say correct, yes.
I don't think so.
Then the consensus is that we don't need to do it, and instead, or request that as a condition? Any further questions or discussion?
Coming from the Conservation Commission, they wanted to ask that you not wash vehicles there.
Right. They will, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We've added a no to that aspect of the plan.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application without any conditions. So moved.
I'll second it, but just with the condition that the fire department signs off on it, like they normally do, but in this case, they have to see those M S D S sheets.
I'm sorry, what is the condition?
The condition is that the fire department has to sign off on it. Cause any chemicals, and if you accept that.
Right.
For your motion.
That's a well.
We have a second, everybody? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
And closed? We have one.
Thank you.
Next item up is, uh, item number two-three-zero dash zero-one-nine, one-nine, excuse me, one-seven. Site plan review application, Fieldstone Land Consultants, P L L C, on behalf of Edgewater Construction. We cross the site plan review, expect a twenty-five thousand five hundred square foot self-stored facility. With associated site improvements, a tax map fifty-five lot one in the commercial industrial district. Found a finding as the application meets submission requirements of the site plan review regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete, and a public hearing may call immediately or will be scheduled for a time date certain.
Just have the board check.
Want to go over the check, excuse me, who are?
Good evening, John Ewing with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Here on behalf of the applicant and landowner for Headquarter Construction in Bryan, James T. Bryan's the landowner. I'll walk right through the checklist.
Please.
So item number one, name and owner of the landowner, so we had land of James T. Bryan, number thirty, top line, title block, uh, the eighth, collection. Tax map and lot number is also on, on here, so we have tax map fifty-five, lot one. It's noted on all plan sheets, north arrow. And a technical stall that's on every sheet. Name and address of the plat, repairer, so Fieldstone Land Consultants here. Vicinity sketch, still on our cover and also from the right-hand corner. Name and addresses of abutting landowners, that's on each plan, uh, site plan and existing conditions. Physical features and uses of land in the two hundred figure of sight, so we have, uh, paving along group ten, west on the road, uh, boundaries, stone walls, buildings on the, to the south on the lines. Perimeter boundary lines in the lot area in square feet and acreage. So we have a, a block here, calls out the tax map lot number, acreage, square feet. The shape, size, location, and use of existing structures on site. So there are no existing structures on site, we do call out on the existing conditions, that there are four uh, metal tanks that are here, which those will be removed as part of the, as part of the development. Identification and access from the site to the public streets. Identification and access from the site to the public streets. Site distances from the access points, there are cuts and proposed changes. So we exceed four hundred feet in either direction, there's a note on that. This is the proposed access, which should be directly across from the butter across roads access. That's shown with width on there. Location and number of parking and loading spaces. So we don't call out individual spaces, the plan is that it's a self-storage, each individual unit, people park directly. Landscape plan, so there's a separate landscape. Plan sheet here. Landscape plan. Lot location, type, and nature of existing and proposed lighting, so we also have a lighting plan. Showing proposed fixture, lighting and photomendics. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge out, proppings and wetlands, that are shown on our existing conditions and on the site plan. Uh, so there is a man-made wetland that's here, that's formed by the DOT's drainage that comes out of a collar here, and this was dug out as part of that. There is no ledge out, proppings on this. Existing and proposed grades and topographic contours at five intervals or less, so we have a grading plan and the existing condition shows the existing topography, and our grading plan has proposed topography. The size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants and fire ponds. So there are no existing utilities onto the site, the utilities that are along Route ten are shown. Needs of providing water supplies, so we're, that's not applicable, there is gonna be no proposed utility, water or sewer. Surface drainage patterns, so those are shown on the existing conditions and also on the grading plan. Contour shown on where everything flows. Copy of the certification by a licensed septic designer, so that is not applicable, as we're not gonna have any sewage or septic loading. Location of existing and proposed onsite wells showing a seventy-five foot radius, also not applicable, there's no water supply proposed. Soil survey data from. Jeff County, so that's shown on our grading plan and also shown on our existing conditions with a table, and it shows the factors against the lot. Location of any existing proposed easements, steam restrictions, and old covenants. So that is shown, there is a right of way to Yale Forest or University of Yale, the forestry department that brought up the rear of the lot here, so that's called. And architectural plans, so we have submitted plans for the self-storage site, showing Gable Inn and Front Inn, and then a plan showing that the pillars out.
One thing you mentioned, that perhaps I heard it incorrectly, you have metal tanks existing in there that you're removing?
Yeah.
What is it they, what is it they contain or did contain?
I don't know what they did contain, but they were a portion of the propane facility that was here for Rhimes. So these are being, they're empty, is what they've all said.
Yeah, those were propane tanks.
Yeah, so I think they were an older style propane tank, they don't have the balloon end, um, and round, but they're, they're like a flattened tank, it's round. So I believe they were an older propane tank, they are situated here on the site, they will, they will be removed by the landowner prior to, to any development.
So they were inactive use?
They're inactive.
Inactive?
Inactive.
They were empty tanks that were stored there.
Correct. I'm requesting two waivers for the requirements. So one of the waivers, both are, are for landscaping. So being along the public right of way, it's, uh, requires a twenty-foot continuous buffer between the property line and the front of any development. We have a variable buffer here, it is continuous, however, with these bump outs of pavement, we're less than twenty feet here and here. The depth is more in the, you know, in these triangle areas, so we're over sixty feet here, uh, about thirty-five to thirty-six feet here, and then it narrows down in the, in these two areas as well. So we're asking for a waiver for the variable width. And then the other one is not really situated for, um, self-storage, so the requirement is facing a public way. That a building or buildings, if there's more than one next to each other, if you have a ten-foot landscape buffer around the building, directly adjacent to the building. So since it's a self-storage site, it's not fitting for the type of use that we're proposing, so we're asking for a waiver.
Could you show me where the driveway is in comparison, the drive coming in, comparison to the storage units across the street?
Yes. So these, these edges here, these lines are showing the current edge of pavement. So the driveway to the site, we're self-stored across the road is right here, we're directly in alignment, so a center line, a center line.
You don't anticipate any traffic issues if they, vehicles are gonna turn at the same time?
No, uh, the self-storage sites tend to be extremely low traffic.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
It's variable, this would be a twenty-four, seven site, so you might see ten cars spin out over a whole day, and that would be a lot of vehicles in and out, just like.
Those are waivers, go, stay on those waivers.
Okay.
Also just the two waivers that they mentioned.
Your wa, your second waiver, the. Looking at all the self-storage units that have been constructed in the area, I don't think that. There's a problem there at all.
No, it wouldn't work, in my opinion, it wouldn't work with.
It's something that would be detrimental.
It's a reasonable waiver to ask. The other waiver is about the continuity, strip wide, and there's varies, as you can see, it varies there. I think there's a fair amount of vegetation in there, is.
Yeah.
In that area there?
Yeah, there is a lot.
I think there's, there are pine trees, I think there are pine trees in there, white pine.
It's, it's a mix of spines and poplars and all.
And you're, you're, leave those trees there.
Yeah, so around, around the, the wetland area here, these trees remain, so we showed proposed lines here, um, all along this northern edge, the proposed line right next to the driveway, so these trees all remain. Um, and then we have proposed plantings that are. That lines it a little better. So these trees remain, and then across the back, following the right of way to the Yale Forest, this portion up front. And then we're proposing plantings to kind of, you know, replant those, those choke points to kind of break up the expansive buildings.
So I think the waiver for that would be a fine one too, since there is vegetation there anyways, and they don't encroach upon the thirty-foot setback with any of the buildings on there.
I'll take the waiver separately, or then impact it?
Inte-impact. And I'll make that motion to grant the two waivers, they're asking one about the, uh, ten-foot green space between the buildings and the parking area, and the other one was about the strip. Vegetation in front of the buildings, those two waivers.
Could you identify the numbers?
Let's see, they're, they're in our site plan review regulation, they aren't in our check.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There are, there are.
So please repeat them for the ten-foot green space.
Ten-foot green space, uh, in front of the buildings, okay, yeah, there. Sarah has them right here, it's section, uh, eight, E, three, under specifications, and it's subsection II, landscaping strips between building and street. We're giving them a waiver.
Got it.
Do you want this?
Well, it's, it's these two?
Yes.
Yep.
We're proposing.
I mean, we're proposing, yeah, we haven't voted on yet.
Between buildings.
Listen.
Um, do you wanna get your second and then have comment, cause I, did you get a second or a second?
I'll second it. Okay, Mike?
And then discuss. So just for clarification, um, don't we require a twenty-foot landscape strip parallel to the public right of way? I mean, that doesn't exclude pavement or gravel or whatever the, the impervious certainties is, right? Is any construct, any built?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
What I'm asking is, um. At this corner where the, the, the pavement is gonna be very close to West Swansea Road, um, it should be twenty feet back, right? And that includes buildings and paved surfaces. The twenty-foot setback pertains to built, to structures and, and paid.
The pavement should be twenty feet back?
Shouldn't it be?
I believe there's flexibility in drive aisles.
It is on that, we have it on park, parking spaces.
Parking spaces can't be nearer than ten feet to the property line, but the drive aisles, um, it's, if it's the driveway, it's at the discretion of the DPW director. And to some extent, DOT says it's on a state road, and with the nature of this development, it's kind of all driveway.
Right.
Around it, so you can have a driveway in the front boundary.
Okay, okay, I mean, um, because it seems to me like the reason there's an issue with the close proximity of that driveway to West Swansea Road is the fact that there's this. Structure here, and to me, what this says is that we're trying to shoehorn more self-storage units onto this lot. Then can adequately fit and still satisfy our requirements. This is a very long frontage, okay? And the stuff that's, the land, the, the greenery that's along here is scrub, you know, it's, when, when Rhimes first built, you know, the propane facility. Um, this was an open human. And, and I remember that development because they were extremely resistant to any kind of landscaping of any sort, and, um, I hope that's not continuing here. Mr. Rhimes Jr., but, um.
Yeah, so we've, we've proposed landscaping across this frontage, and then the trees that would remain and that are there now.
Right.
So these, it's fairly thick through here, um, they are getting to maturity, the white pines are certainly, you're looking at twenty foot high trees.
Right, I know, I know, I know that's been a lot, um, I've been watching it growing up over the years, yeah. So I'm, I'm not disposed to, I, I'm all about the, the second waiver that, um. That I agree that storage units require pavement directly against the building, I, you know, no problem with that, but the first waiver I'm in opposition to, because I. I, I think that we're just trying to put too much, too many structures on a lot that's not big enough to, to accommodate them. And accommodate our town's need to have, to not have these big expanses of pavement in self-storage units.
I wouldn't say that, you know, it's, the building could be removed, I suppose, is what you're getting at, to take the building out of there and just leave the one, two, three, four buildings rather than the five buildings. But you've still got a storage unit there regardless of whether you take the other building out of there or not, you know, you're still gonna drive by in there, and if you can see the ones back there, you can see the one in the front there. And the building in front, in my opinion anyway, well, it's within the thirty foot, it's actually just thirty point one feet, I guess, but it's within that thirty foot, uh, building setback there, so. It's, it good with that. And they can meet the twenty foot in other areas there, it's that very sharp corner there is where they can't meet it. So it's, it's because it's not a continuous strip as we know it in our site plan review regulations, is why they want the variance there, but it's, it's a portion of it probably about. Just a scale is on there, oh, there it is right there. That's fifty feet, so.
What about the possibility of shortening that building similar to your short building above? Just the bonus.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't alleviate the issue of, um, still needing that waiver, cause it's, it's here, it's here and here. So it's really the hardship of the lot, shape and size here, you know, it's, it's so narrow to have the driveway come down just to get any access back here, we would still be within that.
No.
Meeting the twenty foot here and here. So that's really the hardship, it's the narrow, you would end up, you know. Almost not be able to put more than these, you know, these buildings without the waiver, something back only here. Because of this narrow section, and then we're providing twenty-five feet, um, that's to allow emergency access around all, as many sides as possible, and then also access for, for the clients that, that needs the space. So it's not just this building is, you know, shortened out or eliminated, it's across the frontage, because it's so, it's such a narrow lot. The shape of the lot that's there.
So the, the, the point that I find the most objectionable is, is this area right here, and, and I think that's a great idea. If the, the length of this building is shortened, then there's the capacity to have a, a more. To have a continuous screening of those properties. I mean, it's, there's a drop down, right, you're gonna be looking at roofs mostly, right, I mean, isn't, I don't, we don't have the.
And you know, the feet bring current drop down from there.
Is that the whole place and the rest of it is at the same level as the highway?
Yeah, so you'll, where this, uh, was dug out here, that's a real low point, and then there's almost a level drive coming here, and this is, this is all basically the same elevation as this one. Still you need, you're gonna be looking at the, at the front, not so much at the tops.
If you cut this back, you have pretty much a straight line. Taking that corner out, you're getting your distance from there. Okay, you'd have almost the same distance, I'm sorry, we're just.
I've gotta keep twenty-five feet around the building there, you know, we're driving around it, so it'd have to be taken back quite a bit, if not entirely out of there, almost.
Yeah, for this building, this is the thirty foot setback of that, you're talking about, about at least it.
It'd be like down there.
So it'd be approximately the same length as the shortest unit in the center of the, would end up being.
Yeah, or at this, where you're gonna. Yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're still gonna have a landscape strip in through there, you know, it's not gonna be a twenty feet the entire way, some of it's gonna be, like, looks like fifty feet or seventy-five feet there. Thirty-five, forty feet here.
There is, I mean, where it drops down from the, the ditch line of Route ten. It's all guard rail through here, so it's not like Route ten's gonna widen through here, so that's, that's already a thirty foot wide strip. That would remain anyway, that's owned by the DOT, but you have that grass plus what's on the site, so you're gonna put back here ninety to a hundred feet. The narrowest point, you're probably still talking of grass strip off of the edge of pavement, probably thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet from the pavement.
Edge of pavement of Route ten to.
Where do you see that? We're just pointing out.
Yes, so.
I must be reading it wrong.
Yep, so, um, this line type that shows the squares with that, that's the guard rail.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So then on this, on this side here to the, to the west is the edge of pavement, so this is all grass through here.
I've got you.
Right? It's not pavement to the property line. There's, there's this, this thirty foot distance between edge of pavement of Route ten and the property line, and then the.
Yeah, I was misinterpreted, let me see what you mean.
Which is, is nice, but we don't count other people's property towards, you know, the landscaped fundamentals of the average.
Nope, we don't do that, but it's achieving what we're trying to achieve, even though it's there. Again, it's, in my opinion, it's, it's that, uh, it just doesn't go straight, it's just not straight twenty feet, you're approaching on one, two, three places there. I don't know, to me, it's not a big deal.
Did I think?
Then is also a very bad strip of road.
Well, that goes from Route ten all the way from the town line all the way down to the town line is a bad.
Yes, and, and with the intersection of Sawyer's Crossing Road and, and between there and Ash Hill, there are lots of accidents, and. I hope nobody runs into the storage.
If there was a large volume of cars going in and out of that facility, I could understand.
Nobody, nobody could leave Route ten with a vehicle and reach the buildings, cause there, there's the ditchway over. There's gar, there's also, there's all guard rail on both sides all the way down. So there's no way to leave the pavement and ever reach the.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that guard rail ends just at, almost at the end of this southern property line, and it ends where our driveway, the proposed driveway was.
Anything further? Any further? You have a motion that's been offered and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed?
Aye.
Maybe of.
I'm sorry.
Three of us.
Four.
Mr. Malone doesn't vote.
Yeah.
Okay, two opposed, thank you.
Four, four in favor, two closed. They have a motion that the application is complete.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May the second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Close?
Just a question, does snow storage, where does snow storage fall into our checklist? Is that what has to be on a complete application?
Usually address it on the site plan. We address it on the site plan, we make up, show you.
After, after completions?
Yeah, after we'll complete this, right?
Okay.
Because then we're going through the details of the site plans, and then that stuff is ironed out then.
A little open based public hearing.
Yes, so here outlined in orange are the property lines, proposing 25,200 square feet of self-storage, 25 feet of access aisles around almost all four sides and buildings, other than the shorter building based on the man-made wet on the year from the DOT drainage runoff. Driveway would be in alignment, center line to center line with the butters, driveway that goes to the self-storage, so we're 30 feet wide here, then we narrow up next to our gate, so this would be gated here with vents coming out. And then basically these buildings laid out here. Stormwater in the front, operate through this plan here. So grading the stormwater showing proposed drainage from the existing contours and then we're tying in. So there's a stone wall that runs and follows the graded way that goes to Yale Forest along the back, so that's not impacted or graded here, basically just meet the grade at that stone wall. Fairly flat, it's up to 1% and fishing for the middle of the drive aisles, pavement swales the middle curved along the Route 10 side for the site, basically that's to stop the rainwater and then direct it into the catch basin. We're picking up the rainwater from the site, directing it down ultimately through grass stream and swales here and here, and then an infiltration basin and a burned area here. So any larger storms goes over 50 years, so this will handle up to a 50-year storm. Anything greater could bleed over the spillway, now the stone line down to the existing where all the drainage ultimately goes currently in the existing conditions, so matching the existing condition, we have slightly less runoff in the post-condition for every condition.
Before you go beyond that.
Yes.
Where's your snow storage area going to be?
So, yes, snow storage, we have not called out in the plan, but it'd be along pavement edge here, pavement edge here in the front, there's a pocket there, and along the edges here. If it exceeds, you know, these areas, then they could, they would.
Can you show us on the, that doesn't, the trees that you went through before?
So there are trees.
Just in the landscaping plan where snow storage is needed.
Yep, so along pavement edges here, pavement edge here, either side of the driveway here in these pockets, so next to these areas here, and along this back edge here.
Can you speak to the right-of-way, is that wooded currently?
Apparently wooded, yeah.
Okay. So, but it could be if you.
If the forest decided to do a driveway or an access point, they could.
Yeah, okay. But you can't use that, well, it's wooded, you could use it.
We ultimately called out the proposed tree line along that stone wall to not, not embed anything into that.
Yeah.
So that would just. So grading plan, lighting photometric, so all of them would just be wall pack, these are dark sky compliant, full cutoff, so it's 100% downcast. And these are operated by photo cell, so this would turn on and off. The landscaping plan, so we're calling out what trees remain, it's discussed, so that follows that, this back portion for the Yale Forest, the stone wall area and where the easement is. Proposed trees highlighted here, when shrub at the entrance. Nope. We put all the proposed out at the front edge to try to just make it look nicer to the passersby here and to the public. And, oh, on the lighting plan too, so just to point out again, it was mentioned on the utilities, very minimal amount of utility, so we're proposing coming from the overhead on Route 10 to a riser pole, and then everything on-site would be underground electric. So it'd basically come into the front building and then feed through the building to each base of building. And we're basically looking at outlets on the inside of the units and for the light. And then we have our construction details towards the end for the road.
Any questions? Really, anybody online?
Is that going to be fenced? Is a chain link fence going to be around it? I see there's.
Not around, not around, just gated at the.
That's right, okay, just at that main gate right there?
Yes.
So the rest.
So there'd be, there'd be a gatekeeper pad, they would get a number, they can open a gate, but not fully fenced around the entrance.
Okay, so I was wondering at the end right there, where you're going to push your snow right down at the end there, if that was going to be fenced, it seemed to me like there.
No fencing here, it would only be that gate when you drive up the vehicle.
Okay, sure, just vehicles. Pushing it away, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Storage units are by general design, and they're like big tin boxes. So if anybody can build a hoopla or widow's walk or some kind of thing on top of it, you dress it up a little bit, maybe even a dollhouse?
These are going to be a manufactured building.
Yeah, you can order it with that, can't you?
Some you can, so cracky, which is the ones that we submitted plans from.
This is one of the.
And the ones directly across from 10 do not have anything.
Well, that doesn't really have to continue to be ugly, does it?
It kind of does.
Well, it does, it means we can start to change. Unless we start, it's going to continue to be ugly and ugly.
Well, we have, I think this is number seven, isn't it, at least? We have at least seven in Swansea.
Another one down, you have a down right on Route 10 there.
Yes, I think they're taking up a lot of usable, buildable land. This one probably not because who would want to build the oil company, the propane company, but the one across the street is deplorable. What about no storage along the road? No outside activity, no outdoor storage?
We could certainly, yeah, that could be added as a note on there to restrict it.
Absolutely.
No exterior storage.
I remember we mentioned.
No sales too, because what they're doing sometimes is they allow sales to be outside there.
No way.
Yeah, no way.
And has the DOT signed off on your entrance there?
We have not applied for a DOT permit, that would be done after, accepted by the board, or DOT.
So obviously, if it's approved and they move it, you'd have to be back here.
Absolutely, oh, and the driveway, absolutely, yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I add a second?
Yes, you may.
Frank Lenenbringer, who's the gentleman from DOT who's responsible for curb cuts, he's the one that specifically mentioned this location for the driveway access. So it's very unlikely they'd have to come back.
So it looks like it's a go, I mean, where it's going to be, which makes sense right across from the other one.
That's what he told us it would have to be.
Typically DOT wants anything center line to center line, if it's, that's the safest way is to have an intersection style. And based on the property, guardrail ends right before that driveway, so you're very limited on where you could ever put the driveway.
Any further comments or questions?
I wonder if, how the board would feel about requesting a note to the effect that exist, we're, in conversation, we're talking about counting on existing, what I'll call scrub, you know, the trees and such that are grown up on that parcel. We're counting on them as contributing to the landscaping plan, but they're not really indicated here in any way. So I wonder if we could have a note, or perhaps you could propose the vessel deal.
They're shown, so on the landscaping plan it shows proposed tree lines which go around.
Sort of fluffy outlines. So, but could we have a note that would indicate that the existing, you know, trees that are in those areas, as we have told us, would indeed remain there after construction?
So the approved site plan restricts the construction to whatever's approved on this one time.
But doesn't it restrict the presence of trees? We don't.
Yeah, so we're calling out for trees to remain, that one would remain because of the section.
Okay, so you're saying that they don't need to be, the presence of those trees don't need to be indicated on the site?
They are. This is the proposed edge of the tree line here.
If there.
Okay, so it's that fluffy.
Yeah.
Correct, so that's, right, so the tree line, the tree line that's dashed.
Anything that's fluffy.
See how this is dashed?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the existing edge of tree line that comes down here now, and then this would be our proposed, is this heavier solid line.
Okay, 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 thank you, that's helpful.
And also note two on the landscaping plan as well.
Existing trees to remain shall be preserved and protected during construction.
So by a permit, this plan, they're restricted with this.
And the trees that you're proposing, gray trees, you know, they're, oh, amazing.
Any conditions that we.
Conditions, Jane had one she wanted to put in, which are.
What?
Your conditions.
Before we close the public.
You had a condition about there.
About outside storage, outdoors, nothing outdoors.
And we'd add to that, no, no sales outside area, no.
Both of those.
No.
And to indicate on your plan where the actual storage, snow storage areas are going to be.
Sure.
Okay, because right now you don't show that at all.
Yeah, that could be called out.
Any others?
Let's just discuss whether the board wants them to come back for a compliance hearing about noting the storage on the drawing, or if we will let the land use office take care of that. In my opinion, the land use office.
They're more than capable of taking care of that.
Yeah, so true, but we need to.
Have a vote.
I agree with that.
Have a consensus on it, not to overstep.
No, I'm not overstepping the data.
One more question, is this, is this a fence here?
Yeah, chain link fence, so.
Yeah, that's on the Rhymes side.
Right, so if you're pushing snow, if you push it too far, it'll, but you won't, it's somebody else's property.
Any consensus on the conditions?
That, that the land use office can handle.
Yes, okay. And the conditions that we have show the snow storage area, no exterior storage, or I would say vehicles or anything of that nature.
Or sales.
Pardon?
Or sales.
Or sales.
So it's no outdoor storage or sales, is that what you thought?
Right.
Okay, and those conditions there do not require a compliance hearing?
No, so.
So if there are no other conditions we need to discuss, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, so first, the reliance on the.
Land use.
Land use office to receive these conditions and verify that they are being taken care of, Victoria? Yes?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Right.
Scott?
Yep.
Ms. LPS, Jane?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I'll close the public hearing. Before the discussion on this, is it a motion that we accept?
I'll make the motion that we accept the plan.
Second.
I'll say again, with those conditions.
With those conditions.
With those conditions.
If I may, that the plantings not only be installed, but maintained. Five years down the road, bushes die, trees die.
I believe that's, that's part of our regulation, but they have to be maintained.
We ask, we require a guarantee by the installer for one year, following the date of acceptance. So five years down the road, we don't have.
Yeah, there's points in there, they've got to cut down 25 points.
We don't have it.
That's why I said you need to maintain it.
Again, that's, I believe is part of our site plan regulation, might have to be done.
One year, it's one year from start of construction, they have to be planted, and then there's not, it doesn't say about maintaining them, but no.
No.
And just, you can look at some of the existing ones, not necessarily just in Swansea, but anywhere. Some of these buildings that have been up for a while begin to look a bit rundown and not attended to.
Thank God, they have those big, giant, ugly, white propane tanks to hide behind them.
Well, and I, the guy I remember is that, that oil, I do too, all too well.
That comes into an enforcement issue.
And that was the Rhymes Company and they, I don't know what happened. I don't know, Bill, if you were a selectman then or not, were you? No, good for you, lucky you. But I thought they weren't supposed to have outdoor storage.
Well, see, that comes down to an enforcement issue which this board cannot do, that's up to the land use and the select board to enforce.
Yes, and there they are.
We have a motion that's been seconded to accept it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike doesn't have enough to do anyway.
Thank you.
You know, Victoria, it is up to. Oh, Steve, it doesn't.
There's always time.
And then it should be referred to the selectman. To have two tanks all the way through. I just don't get it, how stuff possibly exists to fill all these places. I like, I didn't have time this week where I was going to check on how many empty storage units there are in Swansea. Are they really, are they really in demand? Are people really crying for more storage units? Are there any empty ones?
It's a tricky question because all of the storage units that went in the Behringer's property, that's just barely coming online, so many of those are probably still empty, but I doubt that there are any other empty units outside of Behringer's right now.
Well, when you drive around the one over across the street from this, there are a lot of places that don't have padlocks on them, so I would think that might indicate that they're empty. And eventually we're going to be storage.
Maybe that guy charges more than some of the other ones. Maybe that guy charges more than some of the other ones.
I doubt it, because he's not deluxe looking.
Do we have a way of knowing?
I think he's, I think he's hundred bucks a month.
I mean, how many?
Most of his. Most of his. I can add to some of it, some of that conversation.
Probably quicker to go driving around town, and we'd be digging into the files relative to.
Except for Behringer's, 'cause it's huge.
I can add to the conversation. The airport units, I'm, um, personal friends with the Frolons, and before they were finished, they were all rented by word of mouth. And I know that because I called to get one for a friend of mine who needed a storage unit, and she said, I'm sorry, they're all gone, I would reserve one for you, but they're all gone. I know the Robertsons down in South Keene there, by the oil company, when you're going toward Marlborough. I know someone who tried to get a space there, they have small spaces too, but, and they were filled up. That was at, at least a year ago, or some.
About a year ago, too.
Going to item D, proposed amendments to the site plan review regulations. Proposed amendments impact organization of the document and regulations throughout. We have this public hearing for that. So open the public hearing, the comments or conditions or critique?
I'll just comment that I only printed up one copy of the final one, and Mr. Lane has it, so anybody would like to review it prior to.
Let's take away from.
Voting on it. Mr. Lane has it, and it just has, um, everything that was on the final draft that had been in the packet, I believe, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and then this final, final version has the watermark removed. That's the only difference from the last thing everyone has seen, is the watermark was removed.
I think we spent plenty of time on it, and I think we came up with a lot of good stuff in it, in the changes there, and, uh, I'd make a motion that the Planning Board adopt the amendments to the site plan review regulations and, uh, application.
I'll second it.
What did you say?
Before, excuse me, before we go there, is there anyone online that wants, okay? No, I'm sorry.
No, they, they, they are complaining about it after the fact. They don't wanna come and talk about it.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, we don't like that, right?
What, what did you write that one for? What'd you write this one for?
It was noticed in the paper and around town, and on the website.
We've gone over all of this.
Yep.
Close the public hearing. And then we'll entertain a motion to accept it.
I'll make that motion that we adopt the amendments to the site plan review regulations.
I'll second application.
Michael seconds.
I will second, oh, did somebody say?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, I'll second it too.
You, you heard it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, I'm.
Yay us.
Good to hear.
Nobody's telling the next thing, right?
Any other business that needs to be reviewed?
I actually have one thing, and it's, it's on your agenda for the next meeting, but I'm not sure that it needs to be there, so I'd like to bring it up tonight. Um, a business in town, I believe it's waste management on Route 12, would like to install roof-mounted, like flush roof-mounted solar panels, and we don't address that in the site plan regulations, but generally, when there are changes on commercial properties, it, it does require a site plan modification, so they're on the agenda to come in for that determination at the next meeting, but and I, I'm not exactly asking you to determine that tonight unless it's obviously a no. If it's obviously a no, I'll tell them to not come next meeting, and if it's, if it's not an obvious no for a site plan modification, then I'll keep them on the agenda for you for next meeting. But there's no proposed change in drainage and sheeting off the roof of the building as a result of the panels, so there's no.
Where is it? Where is it?
On Route 12.
The old, uh, Whipton Building.
Yeah. Arthur Whipton's old buildings.
So in, in function, or in, in impact, how would that be different from getting a new roof installed?
Yeah, that's kinda what I was thinking, it really wasn't.
But I wasn't comfortable saying they don't need to come in without conferring with all.
It is.
Existing roof is.
They said flush mount. So I, I believe it's gonna be.
Right on it, or six inches above it, or?
It sounded like right on, being flush mount, but I, I don't know if that can mean something else.
I look at this. But I look at this as new construction, not just a replacement of a roof, but new construction added to the building.
You look at it as that, so we just. I'm with Victoria, it's almost like just a roof.
That's what my thought is too.
Site plan review regulations.
What is the height, does it exceed the height regulations?
No.
No, that, that building's not that high, sorry.
Yeah.
My, my only concern would be if it is flat, uh, flat, if there's a setback from the edge of the roofline, because if not, will it increase the runoff? Or is it going to change the volume of what the drainage on that building is already capable of?
They've indicated there will not be a change in, in any of that, the existing roof is a metal roof, so they're anticipating like rain and snow sheeting off of the roof will be this, will be unchanged with the panels. But they can come in and, and talk to you all about this, I just.
This won't be the last, probably.
We, we have no regulation or zoning on solar panels yet.
Nope.
When, when do you think we're gonna get that?
Well, I should say we don't, but we sort of do, so, you know, this is allowed, it's an accessory use to the building, so they don't need any, um, any ZVA relief to add panels to.
Yeah, it's not a farm type of thing.
No, nothing like that, it's just accessory to the, the existing structure, and so the question is whether or not it requires a site plan modification approval from the Planning Board, because it will be changing their existing site plan, because the existing plan does not have panels on the roof.
I think, for me, the question would be like, could it be done administrative, you know, because?
Yeah, it could be, I won't be here, so I would suggest that. I'd suggest I have them come in.
Yeah.
And, and.
Okay.
Let the Planning Board decide right then and there whether they wanna site plan or not, and then no one can say, well, gee, go ahead and pull this out.
Right, I think it's better not to set precedent.
It doesn't seem obvious that you guys are leaning one way or the other, so they, I think, I agree, they need to come in, but I don't know if you guys are gonna be like, why are they here? Next meeting, this is.
Need the details.
What else is on our table for next week, uh, next meeting?
Um, next meeting, we have Plainview coming back for their compliance hearing, and we have Flatley coming back for their compliance hearing. And I don't believe anything came, anything else came in. Um, today's the deadline for the next meeting, so I suppose folks could push it till midnight.
No, we won't, no, we won't.
Not use folks, I mean.
They could try.
They, they can still email things in pretty late. So, a, a, a heavy night meeting.
Shut your computer off.
You don't have email, can't come in late?
I don't have a choice.
The deadline's set by the state, we can't do anything.
Okay, so I'll, I'll keep that on the agenda, and then there was one other thing that Scott brought up that I don't know if you guys wanna deal with it all tonight, maybe you don't, but it's still early. A stormwater report, what's in it, what matters, why you should care?
We've all seen those.
Oh, that was good.
Hundred fifty pages thick.
So you're getting a teaching job somewhere?
I, I have taught.
Hey, you've been teaching us some things, though.
This is for reference to the town? Or just what we should be?
This is just for you guys, if you're interested in learning how to read them, I mean, my instructions would be, the pages that are interesting and matter are the first few that summarize the project and the way the drainage is gonna be, so it's really the first three pages and the maps at the end.
Are you saying it's reading for when you're getting sleepy and you want to be put to sleep?
I actually find it riveting. I find it very helpful to understand, um, the drainage plan when, when they submit these, but you have, um, stuff like this, which.
That can be interesting too, though, stuff like that, because you can tell how much water they're calculating is gonna be over. They give it sometimes an acre feet or acre inches like that, and you can tell how much water they figure is gonna come off of that, that sheeting action in a storm there.
That would be more interesting to me to learn if I had time to sit by myself and study it, versus just trying to absorb it all.
Can we set it up like a library type of thing? Have it at your office, and someone can come in and check it out?
Not on this one, but on other ones, 'cause this is, this is actually from the self-storage facility tonight, so this is still sort of within the statutory appeal period and such, we wouldn't wanna check it out, and Mike's not done with it yet, but for projects that are completed.
But I think what we're talking about is just a workshop, a group, just a workshop, we sit down with a couple of copies of it and start going through it, reading through it, and just discussing what it means and what it doesn't mean, and it doesn't have to be that one.
Maybe you select, I hope I let you know, it'd be riveting.
It's a good idea for us.
Could we then, um, ask somebody like Chad come in to help explain that, or do we need to?
We could, but I don't know, you know, he's, he's.
Pretty busy, right? Try to get an engineer for him right now.
We can just look at it, Sarah knows quite a bit about it.
We could ask Rob Hitchcock.
Yeah, Rob, yeah, Rob.
He, he might be willing to point out a few interesting highlights from them, and he fully understands them, has created quite a few himself.
I think it's a great idea if I'd like to do it, all that.
Maybe we'll wait until we get a bunch of copies, someone send us a bunch of copies, I said you were making a bunch of copies, unless you have to do it all anyways, they always send you a copy.
They usually only send a copy, but I'll, I'll look through the, the files to see if there's anything that we have, maybe.
We have a bunch, and then we could just have a workshop, sit down and just read it over and talk about it, and see what matters and what doesn't.
Some says set up those, the separate from the meeting, like the.
Uh, no, it should, should be on our agenda, so if we just said, we should, should be having workshop meetings, we have, we've done the blueprint reading a couple times and stuff.
Yeah, but we've been so busy for the last year that, I mean, when I first joined the board, we had nothing like this going on, we was out of here six thirty, seven o'clock all the time. You remember those days, don't you, Scott?
Yeah, we had some long meetings there, but still, yeah, the, the workshop meetings would be helpful, and we still need some, to go over some of the drawings and things too, because we haven't hit on the drainage part of the drawings yet, just to understand what's going on there and how, instead of the catch bases and reading all that, it's quite interesting, as Sarah said about these, quite interesting.
Probably when, um, Webb comes in and does their thing and they have their drawings, that might be a good time for those drawings, or the workshop after the meeting. 'Cause those are gonna be quite intense.
Before the meeting, after the meeting, we get discussing stuff that we've already decided on, and it's not, not a good one for us.
Do we really have, uh, yeah, I know what you're saying, do we do have a plan that's a little more intense than the last one?
That Webb one isn't, isn't much of a, a plan with drainage, and I can see anyway, it's not much catch bases and things like that. We still have the old market basket one, a good one for that, they have several different ways of dealing with it on that one.
Yeah, that would be.
And we can see what they are. And, and it doesn't matter if the drawing is way old, the information is the same, and we can visualize it the same way.
That's, that's a lot of surface, they had to move a lot of water.
They did, yeah, they did, and it's, and as long as you get, and when you get into the plans, or you can see how they're doing it, and just how it works, really, how the whole thing worked together, instead of just a bunch of lines on the paper, which don't mean much. But once we get familiar with, with reading that, then, yeah, we can be able to look at these plans and go through them and, and, uh, ask those guys, maybe stump them sometimes, you know, as to what their plan.
Stump the engineer.
Sure, yeah, like that. So, yeah, we get a little less busy something, we need to stop this, a little workshops.
Looks like it's turning out to be a pretty busy summer.
It does look that way, but we'll see.
We can al- always schedule a specific meeting on a month, just for our workshop, and put other things to another meeting.
We could do that.
So we don't go way into the night on trying to do both things at the same time.
Yeah, and you retain more, because you always do those workshops at the end of the night, and if it's not long.
Yeah, everyone wants to get out of here.
Well, and, and you don't retain the material when you're that far.
Well, another thought I had is maybe at the beginning in the meeting, if we had a workshop, like, I don't know, five o'clock's a little early maybe, but if we had it, say, five to six, a workshop and some of that stuff, and then went into the meeting after that.
As long as everybody's schedule can accommodate that.
Yeah, I know, Brandon, I don't think Ken is, is usually late traveling there, but.
Well, if we schedule it or whatever, I could make it a point to.
No, but you think about that?
Give your boss a spot in the room, you'll win.
He'll yell back.
You don't wanna get fired.
Anything else? The motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second, beat you to it.
All through?
Oh, okay.
We're drawn.
There.